We are now ready for the public forums. Anyone have anything they would like to address to the council? Anything? No? Okay. Very good. We will move next to approval of the consent agenda. Kevin, did you have something you wanted to pull out of the consent agenda to discuss?
I had a couple of items off of page three and four and one off of page 11. I just had some questions and a little clarification.
Anyone have any objections or pulling those out of the consent agenda? Seeing no objections, we'll consider that motion to pass. Except for those matters that Kevin will be bringing up then, to kind of have a motion to approve the consent.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous approval and Kevin, to you.
Okay. It's on page three, it's about midway through the page under the 1967 Card Services. There were some charges for Ariat jeans, like two or three charges there. And then some Amazon, like long sleeve t-shirts. I mean, the total make on the shirts was like just a little under $3,000 and jeans were like $1,400. What? Some, it's like stuff to help them from getting electricity. Okay. So that's plenty of money. Okay. And then-
So you're against electricity in our employees?
I'm against electricity. Yes, I am against that. And then the other item was on page 11 under utility service company. What was it? $75,000, I guess, assuming gallon elevated small tanks for $10,532. What is that? It's on the top of page 11. Is that just inspection law or?
That's for annual inspection.
Okay, okay.
We are contracted, we think.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. That was-
That it?
That was all I had.
Thank you. The next matter, it's a little misleading in terms of the heading. Kansas Transportation Alternatives Concept Papers. This relates to a phone call I received from Mike Mills, who is attorney for the Kansas Transportation Alternatives. That they're based, this has to do basically with the Sunflower Santa Fe Trail, hiking biking trail committee. They are seeking a grant to do engineering on a trail that would involve Marion in some form or fashion. At this point in time, they don't have a specific as to where the trail would be, what the trail would be, what part of Marion it would be in. They are, so, and we would have every opportunity when they do come up with a specific to say yes or no, we'll participate in it. Basically, what they want is to be able to list us a supporter of them receiving the funding to do the engineering concept study. Does that, I don't know if I said that very well, but does it make sense?
Is this also as commonly referred to as rails, to trails or not?
I honestly don't know, but I would bet on it.
It looks like it.
I mean, nowhere does it specifically say that in the information I received from Mr. Mills, but I think that's what it is, yeah.
So we could go on and say that we're in support of it without being obligated to, I mean, if all of a sudden it came up and said that our chunk of the trail is X number of dollars, we wouldn't be committed to anything?
Yeah. I did ask that pretty specifically, that all we're supporting is them getting the funding to do the concept study. And that, once that's done, we are free to oppose any specific plan they may come up with if we don't like it.
Okay.
Wait. I think, and maybe I'm wrong here, right? But this is, it would be the same grant program that we approved submitting a concept for at the last meeting, right?
I wonder, well, I wonder about that. I think you're right, but I don't really know. I didn't, I did not ask him that-
Which, I don't know that it matters. I mean, it's just two different concepts being turned in.
For two different projects.
Right. For two different projects to see if you're even eligible to move forward.
Right. And that I think is right, but I don't know. Further discussion, questions? What he wants, let me read my notes. Yeah. "We would be supporting the Sunflower Santa Fe Trail Committee in their efforts to obtain a grant to examine proposals." Do I have a motion? One way or the other?
I would make a motion to, I guess, approve the support of the application for a grant as long as we're under no obligation, you know, going forward financially.
I can tell you that, again, I specifically asked that question. So if, at any point in time, anyone in first, from this group in first to the contrary, I mean, they're gonna have to, I mean, if we don't agree to give them any money to do anything then.
Right.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion and seconded any questions about the motion or discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous support. Janet, I may, I'm gonna, I'll contact Mr. Mills probably tomorrow and ask what he needs from us, whether I can just tell him the vote or whether he needs like a letter from you saying that this was the vote or something. I'll let you know if I need anything on letterhead or whatever.
Okay.
The ordinance 1508 with regard to meeting times and the dates that we meet. So for those, I think the council knows, but folks who are here in the audience, we have traditionally, well, since I think 2008, the council has met at 4:30 on an every other Monday basis. The decision here was to go to first and third Mondays so that you wouldn't have to guess as to whether it was an every or another Monday on the thing. And we're gonna move our meeting time to 5:00 PM, thinking that that might make it a little easier for people to make it here after work. Is there any, well, first of all, anything that I'm missing here? I think we're ready to put this to a vote, but if anyone thinks that's not the case, please let me know. Okay. Now, do I have a motion to approve ordinance 1508 as submitted?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it. Oh. I'd really like this, Amy does.
Who got, you want it? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I talked to Janet, this is, Janet, if I say something incorrect, tell me, but I believe this is at the paper and it is not at the paper. Okay. So it will not be, it'll be in next, you haven't taken it over yet? Okay. Is that what you told me? Okay. Fine.
You guys didn't approve it yet, so I didn't-
Oh, okay. Good point. Very good point. So it will go to the paper and be published then next week on Wednesday. And the way it reads, it is effective upon publication in the paper. So starting in March, we will be going to the first and third Mondays at 5:00 PM. So on the, on our agenda at the end of it today, where it says the next meeting is February 20th, well, okay, the February 20th is correct, but the March 4th, is it the 4th?
Yes, that's the 4th.
The 4th?
Yes.
Will be at 5:00. Next up is the public hearing notice on ordinance 1509, revisions to the floodplain regulations. I am certainly not an expert on this.
This is just for approval. You have a hearing on April 4th.
Okay. But we're required to do the hearing?
Yes. On April 4th.
Okay. So we're setting it then for hearing on April 4th?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on that from anyone? Can I have a motion for approval to set this for hearing on April 1st?
I'm going to set this for hearing on April 1st.
Counselor Boxa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Burkholder, thank you. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Next is the, I think this was tabled last week, the budget engagement letter with Lloyd Group. I have had an opportunity to talk with Mark, my gosh. Welcome, Mark. I am sorry.
That's fine.
Dove right in here. Before we go further, I should've done this earlier. Anything you want to say, like goodbye, I'm leaving or?
Not quite yet. I've been, now a couple of days, I'm trying to get out and meet people and just learn the system, your budget, your processes, your utilities, just all the things that you do for the community. So it could take me a while, but I'm just trying to meet, mainly meet people for the first week.
Well, let's, I want to talk a little bit more about that when we get to the report section. I did, I'm sorry. I should not have ignored you as we move forward. With regard to the budget engagement letter, and Janet, again, I'm gonna rely on you to make sure I am right about this. We contracted, I think, with the Lloyd Group last year to do this. And perhaps you could just give a brief explanation of what it is they did for it?
They helped us put together the 2024 budget.
Was Brogan here yet?
No.
Okay.
Not when they approved it. Now, when Brogan did come during the process, but when we approved to have them come in and help us, Brogan was not here.
Okay. And 2500, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna throw this out there and then I'll open it for discussion, but I think we ought to do it. I don't think it's fair to Mark or to the city because we don't know how long the market's gonna be here. I hope he's here at least into budget time, but I don't know. And I think he's also walking in cold into our situation. He still needs to learn what we've got, what we don't have, where we get our money, where we don't get our money. I think it would be wise to do, but that's just my thought. Others?
Mark, I mean, do you have a preference? I mean-
Well, I think that'd be good, just for continuity's sake. A year from now, I'm gonna guess you'll have a permanent person in place. And then I think, but I think the continuity of last year and this year, you've been without folks. And I think we can learn it, it's, the time is-
Sure.
But I think this will probably do most of the work in probably July. That would be my guess, July, August. You know what we did last year?
We started early.
A little bit earlier.
Yeah.
Is there a motion with regard to the matter?
I would make a motion to approve the budget engagement letter. Did that cover it? Or should we say to approve the-
I think we'd be-
Proposal from Lloyd Group?
Yeah.
To help prepare the 2025 budget.
Second?
I second that.
Any further discussion or questions about that? I'm taking that motion to mean that we are agreeing to contract with Lloyd Group for the budget, helping us put together the budget. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Unanimous, we pass it. We are ready for counselor and department staff reports. One of the things that concerned me, Mark was here last week, kind of caught me off guard. I didn't expect him really to show up and tell, I don't know, I guess I didn't realize his work ethic because he, I thought maybe he'd be here today. And what concerned me was to find that he, I found him talking to Margot.
Where's Margot? It'll be okay.
Do we have anything from department heads?
No. We had one surprise show up today.
Oh, yeah. Come on up, let's talk about it. Yeah.
Well, we ordered a bucket truck, you know, it was supposed to be here in November and we told them, you know, we bought our own chassis. And we told them that they had a spot to go ahead and slide us in. Well, we didn't know that they had an open spot and they went ahead and slid us in and it showed up today. So, yeah. So that was a huge shock for all of us.
And, 'cause, I mean, I was not on the council, obviously, but in the audience for those discussions, I would have expected you to tell us that in, I don't know, December?
Well, exactly.
Maybe.
I thought they were gonna start working on it maybe in August, September? And then I was like, I didn't get the phone call and he goes, your truck will be here tomorrow. I was like, what? I didn't even know you guys were working on it.
Did you just write a-
We bought the chassis and we had an open spot, so we went ahead and slid it in.
Did you just give them a personal check to cover until we can?
They gave me one of yours.
Really?
Yeah.
I wonder where those went?
Janet said, I got this barrel, it'll be fine.
So, Mark and Janet?
We found some notes, there's three options to pay for it when it arrives. I think they're thinking late 25, or 24, early 25. They were gonna go through those and we'll recommend the best option.
Okay.
We'll have that, Mike.
Yeah.
Excellent. So then we'll be able to terminate the lease on the truck that that's replacing?
Well, yeah, we don't, we gotta, we can keep it for a month or two if we need to, to make sure we don't have no problems, but then, yes, we'll terminate.
Okay. And was there any, do we have to give like a 90-day notice to terminate that or anything? Or it was just a month to month?
Yeah, month to month.
Okay.
So we're gonna try to get rid of that as quick as possible before we're not left with money.
Okay. Good. Cool.
Thank you for bringing that up, Stephen. Margot, anything from you?
Just working on 2025 state travel guides listings and aren't the parks already launching new vendors?
We probably had, I don't know, hour and a half or so that we've talked in the last few days, Margot and I, with regard to her, what she does. I mean, it sounds funny, but I asked her to give me a kind of a detailed list of the various duties that she has and she accommodated me with that. Now, I will get that, I will get that to Janet so she can share it with everybody. And, you know, trying to plan a little bit ahead as to what we do when she retires and I- Mark, well, I don't want to go into any detail other than saying, Margot and I discussed some alternatives that may or may not come onto the table at a future point. If they do, then obviously you'll know all about, all about them. With that, then, let's go to Mr. Boxa.
Do you want to go to Zach?
Zach hides back there. Sorry, Zach. Yes, please.
I'm trying to learn, a game can't be there.
I appreciate that.
Not really much from the police department. Dustin still starts the academy the 25th. Brian started his fifth week yesterday in the academy. I did find out that we were told wrong, that the academy is still only 14 weeks. We were told 16 by several people, so we were working on bad information. So it's two weeks shorter, but, yeah, Brian's doing good.
So it's 14 weeks?
What?
It's 14 weeks?
Yeah. So Brian's doing good in the academy, Dustin decided, so.
Good, good news.
You can go now, Tim.
Thank you. I was just gonna give a little brief report on the water department. I got to go down there and take a tour this afternoon to kind of get an update of just where things are at currently and talk to Jason Wheeler down there. And it was very informative and very interesting to see where we're at on everything. The, you know, we have the ozone system which filters the water that we draw from the reservoir. And, you know, those facilities were built in the 60s. The ozone, I believe, was installed in around 2008, that system, to address the blue-green algae issues. Some of the equipment's still from the 60s and some is newer, but the, there were two ozone generators. One was sent off to be repaired or a full service on it. And it should be getting, hopefully by the end of March, being returned and getting installed and be up and running, so that's good news. And there's some other parts of the system, it's kind of a complicated system, that are being updated. But there's still quite a few issues down the road to be looking at to make sure that the facilities are, you know, operating well. But most people don't really care about all the very minute details of what happens in that process. But for the big picture, one thing I really kind of questioned on was, you know, where does, people's biggest concern is my water safe coming out? And so I had a question like, when do we do the testing with KDHE? What gets tested? Well, you know, the details of that. Certain things are tested weekly, monthly, quarterly and annually. And going back, I was just asking, over like the last five years. The good news is, we've been in compliance with everything with the KDHE with regards to our water quality, which is, which is excellent, considering a lot of the issues they face with blue-green algae and personnel turnover, equipment going down, the ozone machine having to be changed out. And yet, thanks to the staff, they have been able to keep us all in compliance and keep our water quality in great shape. So, and I know also in a previous meeting, someone had, a family had concerns about their water and was questioning that and I asked, and they said that they had, the staff at the water department said they, you know, took that seriously, they tested the water, they had the tests sent off. I think they did two tests on it and it all came back showing that, you know, no issues with the water quality. So they're doing a good job down there and I just wanted to kind of give an update where we're at currently. But, you know, there will be things down the road and hopefully we can get a bigger picture drawn out, you know, six months, one year, three years, kind of plan of looking at what would be some major issues we would be facing in the future and start looking at them ahead of time instead of wait until something breaks down. One of the challenges they do have there is with some of the equipment that is so old, sometimes when one portion of it is updated, it doesn't always communicate or work properly with the rest of the system that is currently there because that part is outdated. So often you can't even find the replacement part because it's an outdated system. And if you put in a new style of part, it's not gonna jive with the old system. Pardon my lack of better terminology. So that's gonna, in the future, be some issues we'll have to address to determine what's the best way forward, whether to repair something or look at replacing larger components in order to keep the system all going and keep, keep the water coming out the way it should, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Tim?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. Burkholder?
I was wondering where we stood with the Lang real estate deal with that property up on the hill as far as where that was at?
I have had a couple of emails with, I'm trying to think of her name.
Kristen.
Kristen, yeah. And Janet has been copied on, I think, all of those. We've deeded the property, we've done the deed. And I don't know, Janet, we talked at a previous meeting about supplying her with a list of tradespersons. Did I, did we ever come up with anything on that, you know?
I haven't.
Someone suggested that Margot had one. Do you have, you know what I'm talking about?
The contractor's list?
Plumbers, carpenters, electricians. You might?
Should be a piece of paper. All the licenses that are registered?
Yeah, because they have to get, they have to re-license every year, so.
I mean, it's logical, but-
I can get it, I can print it off.
Oh. So you, you know where to find it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, we need to get-
But nobody has ever asked me for it.
Okay. Well, we need to get that to Kristen.
Okay.
And then were they still wanting, she talked that one time about like having a meeting, trying to get like our input, kind of like design. I mean, I know they sent out that, kind of that rough plan or whatever, but-
The email that, I couldn't look at, I tried to look at my email over the weekend and I couldn't get in. It said that I wasn't safe or it wasn't safe or it was gonna explode in 30 seconds or something. I don't know, but I could not get in my city email. Today, I did. And I had, that's when I had the most recent contact from her and I just read it before the meeting. But she made reference to coming to meet with us, to go over options, something to that.
Okay. Okay. And the only other thing I had, and I don't know if that would be more of a Darren question, was, you know, we talked about, it was before you guys got on, but we talked about that runway at the airport, you know, trying to get that repaired. Or I don't know what made that come to mind, but does anybody know where we're at with that? And if we were getting anything on that or?
I can tell you a little bit, but before, Janet, Stephen, anything? Okay. I did talk to Darren about that, it's probably two weeks ago. This is not gonna be very helpful, but it's, it's not been forgotten. And he had the parameters of a plan that I would describe as maybe kind of a Band-Aid, but at least would get us by. But he's, as most of us know, he's gone having a grandbaby or something. So we'll need to address that to him soon.
Okay. That was all I had.
Zach?
I just had two quick things. When I, and I'm gonna apologize because I cannot remember your name to save my life. I've been sitting here trying to think of it, so I apologize.
I'll do it.
Have you gotten a punch list, a written punch list from the district?
Yes, I was trying to one of them today. I meant to be on my brother's truck, they called by their people. Just stopped in traffic.
I'm gonna miss some kind of feed into my second part, but do you mind if we, with him?
No. No. Come on up to the microphone over here if you would.
Right, Bobby, first.
Oh, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Once you start reading, you're gonna see my concerns.
Thank you.
Of them, I'm trying to underline.
When were you able to get this list?
I got those from him.
Okay. When were, yeah, was he able to? Oh, February 7th, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Two days after we had met last time.
Yes, yeah.
And if you'll see, I'm literally the first line. Some issues. When I got down to number three, I really couldn't even hardly understand what it was saying. Number two says I gotta build a 30-foot foundation. I don't know, anybody will dig a 30-foot hole in my yard.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's 30. I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, I grant it's typo. There's a lot, you know, for a government official. I mean, if I turned something like this, then I'd probably be sent for a drug and alcohol evaluation. I work for the government, so.
Are you, sir, are you objecting to the contents or just pointing out that it's-
Just kind of hard to understand what some of it means, you know? I mean, this is, like I said, from a city official and it's just a little frustrating to try to read through. I mean, we've got a lot of the work completed. We're continuing on the work. It, you know, we're shooting for the March 4th deadline. One of the holes is probably close to 30 inches now. It's about, say, 20 to 30 inches wide. Working on the other one. We redid the stud on the house, the one that he said wouldn't work. Instead of going straight down, I balanced off the house through the tensile strength of the wood. Should be more secure that way. The soffit, actually, that won't be required, it just needs to be cut even with where the old roof was and all that other stuff we knocked down. Because the original roof is still under that, what should, whether, it looks like there needs to be a soffit. There'll be probably a two-foot by two-foot area that will require a soffit. But like I said, other than that, most, I'd say 70% of the work's done. The cleanup is coming along great. A lot of the trash, I mean, it's literally right around the corner here, more than likely to drive by on your way out. So, like I said, it's, got the car moved from out, the truck and trailer that was in front of the house moved. So, I mean, like I said, the front porch is cleared off. We've gotten a long way.
I talked to Mr. Masters late last week and he advised me that he had been in contact and had provided you with this.
Yes.
I didn't see it, but he said you'd, he had done it. I guess the thing I would say to you is that, you go by Steve, what do you go by?
Don.
Don?
Steven's my son.
Oh, that's your son?
Yes, yes. I was there the day Mr. Masters presented this, so my son Steven, you know, he's been doing a lot of the work.
I don't know a lot of people named Donald that go by Steve, but-
Yeah, I hear you. Hey, I've seen, I worked with a guy named Robert, he goes by Bo, so.
Okay. If you don't, and I understand the point that you're making.
Yes.
All I would say is that if there is, you know, genuine confusion, if that, you know, something here, you're just not getting what's really wanted, make sure and reach out to Mr. Masters about that. I think this, I think previous councils and this council in a shorter period of time have demonstrated that the desire is-
Yes.
To work with you here.
Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
And I just, like I said, I tried to be here every meeting since, you know, I do want to say, he did present an update- he did present an update, I mean, it wasn't the greatest, but he did give me one, so I just wanted to, just kind of let everyone know that we, we are continuing.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One other kind of second point I had that kind of goes along with what I'm hearing here. I like the public forum at the beginning. We want to add, I know we used to, I think when I first came on the council, we had one at both at the beginning and the end. And with moving the meeting to 5:00, and though we talked like that, would maybe allow more of the public to get here, but like Mr. Wilson and I, for example, right, gets here at 5:10, well, he's already missed the public forum at that point. To, to be able to address something.
You were here, weren't you?
Yeah, I was like two minutes late.
I guess maybe my point.
My left worked about five minutes earlier, but I was still about two minutes late.
I, I see what you mean.
I wonder thoughts of adding one at the end too, right? So that if, right, we get to a meeting, so let's say we're a half hour, and it's 5:30, so that if somebody's been, you know, they have something they wanted to bring up, just in general, but it's maybe not agenda-related.
Or even just, you know.
Well, having it where it is can be about, people can talk about anything.
Right.
It doesn't have to be agenda-related.
Right.
But, Tim, Kevin?
I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to it.
The, the thing I think we would want to do, if that's the case, we would need to, well, I think we should, anyway. The early public comment section then should be limited to discussion of items that are on the agenda for action that night.
And I think that's the way it used to, when I first came on, I'm pretty sure that's the way that it was worded. There was one at the beginning that was to address agenda items that we were discussing that night, and then the one at the end was open to anything.
Yeah, and, and they only, I would, as, chairing the meeting, I would try to limit it to then, if folks are coming in and they're talking about just this unrelated, this out-of-the-blue issue, I would ask them to wait for the second public discussion portion, because that would be the appropriate place for it. And if someone wants to talk about something we're dealing with tonight, then that would be what would come up in the early one. Does that make sense?
So you just backtrack in your agenda, yeah?
Yeah. That, or, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want anybody to filibuster twice.
Right.
Right, right.
It's kind of where I'm coming from.
I mean, you could almost word it differently for this, you know, the second time.
Yes, yes.
You know, like a, I don't know, follow-up or, just so that, you know, you, you would have a chance to talk.
It just looks like there's general consensus, and I don't think there's something to vote, but if somebody disagrees, I, I'm not hearing it, but I'll work with Janet, and we will restructure it so that next time, we will have two options, and we'll have a specific explanation as to what can be brought up at the first one. The second one will be open.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, is it, Amy?
I just wanted to say, I took a tour today of the, the water plant too, and it was pretty eye-opening. But, those guys are doing truly a heck of a job with what they have. And then I just wanted to follow up Ruth with what you had mentioned the last time in regards to the cemetery. I talked to Brad Yazle, because I guess I was a little confused. I thought you meant like the stones were kind of caving in and, and stuff like that. And he said, there is an area that, it's just, you know, when, when they put the dirt on after the funeral, he said there's going to be air pockets, and eventually that dirt settles. And there's just kind of this specific area where you were at. And there's, water keeps pooling, and, and it's been wet, but he said it's been happening kind of over quite a bit of time, and there's little divots above quite a few of the, the plots. And so I have a message out with, with Tim, and hopefully we can get that kind of fixed up for people.
To put additional dirt on grave sites that have settled?
Correct, that's what, that's what Brad, Brad told me, that, that's all that needed to be done, because more water gets on there than it just keeps settling further and further, and, and there's little pockets. He said he was surprised too with mowing, that, you know, people aren't, you know, the wheels aren't getting stuck in there, and, and it is probably a hazard with people walking on it, you know, to a, to a different plot. But then you just have the water that keeps pooling, and then those areas just keep settling. And it's just, it's a natural occurrence after, after burial, those air pockets settle, and then you have a little divot, but.
What, did he say what part of the cemetery that's in?
Ruth, you probably, yeah, he said there's one area, and I, I'd have to re-ask him that. It's really bad in that region. So I was going to kind of drive out there, it was, it was hard, why are you looking at her?
Well, because she held up her hand, but I want her to come to the microphone.
Oh.
You know, if you two would just take that over there with you.
Like karaoke. It's north of the circle, just right there.
Okay.
And it's really, really low.
Yes, okay, then that's what he said.
And part of the problem is, if, if it's a flat stone, you can't just put dirt. You're going to have to take the stone up, and the stone has a base under it.
Right.
So you can't just take the stone up, put the dirt down, and put the stone back.
No, right.
You'd have to redo all that, and so it's a process.
Yes, yeah, he, he was talking about, there's some areas that you have, you know, the stone, and then, I might not be wording it right, but then you have like the plot itself. And then in that plot, the stone is fine, but it's the plot that there's the divots. He said there, that's where you could just go ahead and, you know, plop dirt and reseed it, and that's going to help. The areas where the, the stones are kind of starting to kind of cave in, that is a whole other thing. But I, I knew where, you know, he was kind of talking about where that water just keeps sitting in, and then just keeps settling and settling and settling.
Yeah. But you know, the idea is not to dump, a truckload of dirt on each grave.
Right.
Let's just do it gradually, you know, let it settle down a little bit, and just keep that dirt. The, the other thing they fight out there is, a lot of times when you want them to add dirt, that dirt's already mud.
Yeah.
And you, you can't add mud.
Right.
So, there's a lot of things that go on out there that, it's not that they're trying to ignore stuff.
Right, right.
It's just, it's a process.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, it might be that they could mark them with flags where they deserve to be. Sure, absolutely. You know, it's going to, yeah, when it dries out, yeah.
And I think a lot of that out there too, and it's just happened over time. I mean, there's lots of places that the road is higher than where the stones are, so you have no drainage. So your roads kind of work like a dam.
Yeah.
And hold that water in there, and like I said, I think that's just from however many hundred years
settling in time.
that's been out there, because like you said, you can't go add a bunch of dirt without going to the expense of raising all those stones, and that would be probably ridiculously expensive to.
And several hundred dollars to reset one.
One, yeah.
And, and worrying about damaging it as well, you know, you don't want to, but, yeah, that's all I have.
I think it's just kind of a bad recipe for wet ground, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, just to make sure your funeral's in dry weather. I've got a couple of things, and one kind of actually relates to the discussion we're just having. I wondered, I mean, I appreciate, I have no idea, Stephen is always here, Margot is always here, Zach's always been here for the most part. I don't know if that's because they are being here in case questions come up, or if they're being here because they were told to by, you know, at some point in time. What I was wondering is if it would make sense for the council, this discussion, I think would fall under Tim's juris, Mr. Makovic's jurisdiction, and he not here, I don't know if he'd ever been told to, but I wondered if we should think about asking the various supervisors or department heads, we'd have to define who it applies to, to be here like one of the two meetings a month, either the first or the third of the month.
I think that would be a good idea.
I mean, would they be required? I mean, could it be something that they could just, because some people would have to take off some work to come, so would that be something that they could come if they have things that they need to be noted? Or would that be like straight across the board for everybody to?
My concern, and I'm basing this on when I was here for the, for a few months before we all took office, is that there would be times that Landon would be here, and, and I don't know if Landon was on the clock when he was here, or if he would just, you know, been a good guy and showing up, Stephen's here. But, that we would have, there would be a discussion about something that one of the other people would try to answer, but they really didn't have the, the authority to answer as to that thing. I, I don't, Mark, you?
I see it both ways. In Emporia, department head would show up on, if they had invited him on the agenda. And at that time, they don't have any more, we, we met every other week, so if something came up, we could talk at the study session the following week. They've done away with those since I left. And then in Neodache, a few months I've been there, that a department head came to all the meetings just for that purpose.
But, why don't you just think about it? Maybe we can talk to, and, with to our staff and see what they think, too. I, I don't think it's an earth-shattering thing, but, I don't know, it just seems like there's times that we're talking about things, and the person that maybe could give us an answer isn't, isn't here, and, and that varies depending on what we're talking about, so.
Yeah.
Mark just mentioned the, the work meetings, or what do you call it?
We had it, we called them study meetings.
Study meetings, yeah. I, Mark and I talked for a while today. We haven't even talked about doing, you know, anything like that study meeting, but, because at this point, I, I have felt like we're just trying to stomp out fires and keep all the balls juggling in the air till we get an administrator on board. Well, there he sits in the flame. And it might be time where we can actually start to talk a little bit more about policy and thoughts and changes and that sort of thing, which could be done at a study meeting. The other thing I, what I brought up to Mark was, I've been doing some walking around this building, and I, I would like to see us, you know, whether we, maybe in March, we all have a scheduled meeting, 30 minutes early or an hour early, or maybe agree to stay an hour after we adjourn this part of the meeting. Obviously, you know, perhaps anybody who wanted to come with us could come with us. But, and just tour all of this building, because I think there is some serious maintenance needs here. I, you know, just, these are small examples, but we rent out the ballroom upstairs, and we require the renters to clean it up, wash the dishes that they use, and all that sort of thing. There is no hot water in that kitchen over there. There, we, it, for years, it's had an ice machine, still has, as I understand it, a working ice machine, but it doesn't work because it doesn't have water, a water line or something, I don't know what it is to it. But, and, and I don't know that, are any plans to fix it? And you, you wa, we, we have a washer and a dryer that is to be used to wash the tablecloths that are used upstairs. Is it the washer or the dryer that doesn't work?
Dryer's.
Dryer's dead?
Don't you take that home sometimes, Margot, and dry them?
I've been maybe in a well during a drought.
Yeah.
The, it, I mean, those are small examples, but the, the Marion Advancement Campaign, the community foundation, fixed up this room, fixed up the ballroom, fixed up the balcony, had plans to work on the kitchen, when the city indicated they'd like to transition us out and the city take back over, which was fine. What's disappointing is that I can't see that there's been any maintenance. I know, it's clear there's no improvements done, and I, I'm not sure there's any maintenance being done. But, I just, I know, I'm on a rant. But, I thought maybe it would be good, we could, we could all just together, it'd be an open meeting, walk around and take a tour of this place.
Could be a good idea.
Okay. I'll, I'll work with Janice, maybe Janet, and maybe we can throw out some options that we can discuss at a future meeting.
I think it's a good idea, especially if we're going to advertise this as a, as a rental, you know, to rent out an area, and you, you don't even have hot water. That has to go against some violations when you're, when you're cleaning up.
Speaking of that, where is our handicapped accessible men's restroom in this building?
In the women's.
In the women's?
Uh-huh.
Is that?
It, it says, somewhere, it says, there's a handicapped restroom upstairs in the women's. I've had to help gentlemen, I've held the doors all, but.
I was going to ask how much help you administered there, but.
Actually, the sign in the men's room says the handicaps upstairs, use the elevator.
Thank you.
But if you use the elevator, that's going to smell.
Oh, boy.
Would you retire that joke, please, Steve? I've heard that about a hundred times. So my point is merely that I think we need to, I, we've got a lot of things we need to address, but I, I think this building kind of gets taken for granted sometimes, and I want to, that'd be one of the things I want to go through. That's kind of it for me. Anything, anyone else wants to address? Mark, I, I've come back to you officially now, words of wisdom.
How long would you, learn all I can in a short time?
Thank you. I was really pleased because I, people were telling me, well, this guy walked in, and he's your new administrator, I guess, and so, I think that's really good, and I really appreciate you doing that.
I'm trying to do that, I'll try to do some more also.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn. Amy?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, I.
Aye.
Posnae, motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned.
Mike, before everybody gets out of here, you guys hear a question, this website has been down for most everyone in the city of Marion. That's why your email didn't go through, that's why your email didn't go through. Have you received the test email that I sent to you?
I don't know what to.
Your email, it said, please, please reply to this if it goes through.
The, the email you sent me this afternoon when we were on the phone, I got that email.
You got that?
But it had been down since Saturday at some point.
At some point, sometime Saturday, at some point apparently, the Marion KS.net domain was not renewed.
No, that's not the case. What the case was, was it expired as of today. The credit card that they had on file to renew it was Tiffany Jeffrey's credit card, and it did not go through.
Well, they disabled the domain and directed it to a parking area on Saturday, which disabled your ability to send the email and disabled the website. It is slowly propagating back out, because when it is reregistered to a domain, it takes each individual internet service provider, comes back at a different time. Most troubling is your email sending to you was redirected to a site called m.v-i-o.co, which is a server in either Belt, either the Netherlands or Finland. And it did not acknowledge to anyone who was sending you an email message that those messages were not going through. In fact, it certified that they did go through, but they went to there instead of to you. Now, it's possible that they've set this up to re, re-gen and go back, but that's also why you couldn't come through, because MarionKS.net was linking to a domain that's a parking domain in Finland.
Right, but I sent an email from my personal email to my city email when I realized there was an issue last night, and I got an undeliverable response on my personal email saying, this message was undelivered.
We didn't, because our, our server came back and said it was deliverable to, and it acknowledged where this, this site.
I'm just saying, I don't know that that was a, like, blanket thing that happened.
Well, we had, we documented it several times from several different IP addresses, but I, I'm actually at this point worrying if there was things that may have been lost forever that someone would have sent. That's, your, the thing you, I sent to you did come through, the thing about the accent. So, okay, that one did go to that v-i-o.co thing, because we traced it. So apparently it is being forwarded back.
That thing that you just described, does that, do you, you have that, that we can have Lloyd get that address from you to try to take a?
Oh, yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
And Phyllis has got it, too.
Okay.
But, it, as, according to the website, it expired on the 20, on the 15th of December, and they, they terminated it on Saturday and restored it today.
Would, Janet, would you mind just ask Lloyd to give Eric or Phyllis a call and get that?
Phyllis has talked to Lloyd, but there were still questions.
Did you tell him about that?
Yeah.
I'm out the way.
He did. Even before I got around to asking the question, was this allowed to expire by not renewing? He told me, this is the time of year we ordinarily renew the website.
Well, that part of it, I mean, we have an explanation for what happened, and we'll, we'll need to address that, and I'm fine with that, but I'm.
It's addressed, it's taken care of.
Okay.
It's all been taken care of.
Okay, but I'm concerned about the, the part that someone maybe redirected to some, we're all scared about. But I'm concerned about the part that someone maybe redirected to some, we're all scared about the various weird email addresses out there and such. That's what I'm hoping you can give Lloyd.
I am guessing from what his experience is that this was a legitimate holding domain in Finland that sent it back.
Okay.
I'm just raising the question because, as you say, you probably want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. So, Phyllis, if Lloyd calls you, will you give that to him?
If what?
If Lloyd calls you, will you give him that address?
That little dog top right out, I could get.
We, yeah, we can, but I talked to Lloyd this morning. It's not like he's going to be calling back.
He also insisted it was back up this morning.
And when it was?
It is, but it takes time to propagate through the network.
Here's the thing, Phyllis, I don't know what your conversation with Lloyd was about, how in-depth whatever.
It was about why is the website down?
Okay. I'm saying, I want to follow up on what Eric brought up about things being redirected to that thing, which may be perfectly legit based on what was just said, but I'd like Lloyd to check it out, so I'd like him to have that address.
Well, we'll give him the address.
CMX Record for the dog.
We'll give him that address.
Okay. All masked. Thank you, folks.
I mean, he's here for meetings over, and I didn't, I didn't second public forum. Could I say anything? It'll take six minutes.
We're still recording, so.
We're still recording, yeah, okay, yeah, fire away.
Get the mic.
These are basically just questions. Tim, do you know how much debt is on the water plant?
Not right now, I do not.
Are we still going for the HOSO?
I don't know that information right now, I'm looking to.
And has any discussion or thought been given through the moving, the money, the checking account? Is it just bearing accounts?
The checking account is.
We made 103,000.
The checking account is interest-bearing.
Janet, I know what Marion National pays on the checking account, because that's the one checking account. And Tim said that on the 2.4 million that we had $39,000 interest. Well, I have nowhere near that much money, but my interest is 18,000.
But Tim's information when he said that was with regard to 2022. The 2023 interest, which I reported, was 103,000.
We still could probably make more if we could control the term. And the last thing I would like to say, has a suggestion box ever been considered? Will people make that for something you didn't want to go to council and say?
Like, what do you mean by suggestion box? I mean, in the, on the website?
No, no, just in the office.
I haven't, you know, doing that is something I'm fine with, but I've done them over the years in various things, and mainly what you get is, you don't get much, let's put it that way. What you get usually is someone being funny, but.
Well, we have one at church, and it seems to work pretty well. They have to sign their name, who makes the suggestion, but.
Well, okay, well, that would make a difference if you do that. Plus, you may have a different crowd at church than some of the ones I had at District Court.
One of the things we did in Milwaukee with the suggestion box was we annually gave out a prize to the best suggestion. That also sort of elevated the.
But I'm just thinking.
Which would be, if people are okay with having, say, you know, sign this, we know who you are, that's.
Well, I'm just saying, things like this, I see you took the stain out of the carpet here. I looked at that for four years. It's just things like that, you know.
Actually, what we did was, we used the blocks that were being stored in the room back there and took up the stained ones and put it in the room. Thank you, I, thank you, you're the first person to say anything.
Well, I looked at it for four years. That's all I have to say, thank you.
That's, you know, that was my, Mike Powers will take the stain out of the carpet.
And we had a real nice conversation with Mark last week, so.
Oh, very good.